Okay, it's 7:03 and I'd like to call this monthly regular board meeting of the Pomar Eagle Area School District to order. Call.
Jean Reeve.
Here.
Mitzi Reschewski.
Here.
Michael Eddy.
Yes.
Tara Leroy.
Yes.
Zachary Rakowski.
Here.
Christiana Williams.
Here.
And Doris Parsons.
Here. We have a quorum, I'll read the district mission statement, "To ensure that students excel with intellect and virtue inspired by innovative educators who engage and challenge each individual." Do you agree with the pledge?
I approve the pledge of the United States of America and to reiterate the oath of acceptance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with which we begin and end this world.
Approval of the agenda. Do you have the agenda for your motion? Are there any changes or additions?
I approve to approve the agenda as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And does approve. Public comment. We have two people that have asked to do a public comment. Michelle Lemke-Geyer.
Yeah, sure. Sure. We should wipe this off. Sorry guys, this is my first one.
You just need to go to the other side.
Okay. Well, I'll just sit over here and practice watching this and see. So my name is Michelle Lemke-Geyer and I just wanted to just make an amendment that I am personally opposed to the four day a week school week. My kiddo is in more K this week, this year. Next year I'm obviously moving kindergarten and just feel that it's just, there's enough changes going on with the district, with all by our closing, it's going to be a bigger district in general for the elementary school, heading to expand hours the other days, not even including the extra time for busing. I really see it to give ignorance on the overall.
Thank you, Michelle. Amanda Mead.
Usually I know when you might call fun.
For those of you that don't know me, my name is Amanda Mead. I'm relatively new to the district. I do have five kids in the district, which has made me very familiar very quick. I would like to say I am opposed to the four day a week school week. And with the limited access that we've had to the proposal, I've come up with a list of questions to present to the board. With the nationwide average of district savings at 2.5%, what have you guys determined the anticipated savings to our district? What is the overall anticipated impact to families? With everything happening right now in the world, is this the right time to make all of these changes for our district? How will transportation issues, for example, sports practices on Fridays for those kids that can't drive, transportation to and from the full day daycare on the fifth, and the hours of operation for the fifth day, how will those transportation issues be addressed? What is the impact of the increased kids home alone? Having schools located in two communities already creates challenges for many families. How will you, how will adding more scheduling challenges impact enrollment? What will be the cost of childcare on the fifth day? Will it only be an eagle? When you turn the page. What will be the time extension for the school day? And is this in alignment with the hours requirement for the state of Wisconsin? Will this change impact lunch times during the day, recess, study or homeroom times? Has an actual cost benefit analysis been completed for our district? What is the anticipated impact on open enrollment and do we have data to support it? Historically throughout the referendum process, it has been stated that we have a regionally high number of minority, specifically ESL students, low income and special needs population. How will this impact these children? Without an in-depth proposal and a presentation to the community in full, I don't think that you would be doing your due diligence as a board to approve this right now.
All right, I don't. Any other public comments? Okay, thank you. Committee reports. Curriculum policy. Last meeting was April 27.
We were the chair.
Yeah, so I don't know.
Yeah.
You and I were there. I remember where.
We were there.
Minutes are in the board packets. Christiana is the new chair of curriculum policy and I assume you'll be setting up a new meeting. Did you have comments about the last one, Mitzi?
Well, just that you and I were the plural ourselves and it was to discuss our curriculum policy during COVID-19. That's why we met and we came to a decision.
And I can go over it just for people who are here, Carrie if you want to. Our students at the high school, middle school level are being able to determine if they want to go pass fail or get their actual letter grade. And they, Carrie did a really nice job putting all that into place. It's, it's a nice option. A lot of districts are just doing pass fail and these kids, what Carrie's thoughts was, is we've got a lot of kids working really hard to get As and they should be able to. Even kids that were going to get Bs or whatever, just doing pass fail seem to not recognize what efforts they're putting in. So thanks Carrie, that was a great way to do it. Finance committee. Finance met before this meeting and made a lot of stuff going on.
Yeah, we had an extensive list. We reviewed our vouchers, the food service program. We did miss the deadline unfortunately for summer meals, so that's something we will most likely, we will not encourage participation in that. We are, we had a discussion of our teacher contracts and who, some of the people that we would like to bring back. We also reviewed our health insurance with our new vote. The refunds of spring sports as well as recess milk are in the works, so that ended up being a non-discussion. We discussed wraparound daycare, that'll be on action item as well as step program. Summer recreation, we kind of said there's nothing much with COVID going on and we are looking to move our middle school athletics to our conviving program, which is outside of the lobby restraints, lobby cap, so, and with sixth grade that allows some additional opportunities. We looked at the bear model and Jeff came to us with two, a secretarial and an occupational therapist contract discussion that results in pretty significant savings. And we are also recommending that sixth grade lunch prices be the same as in middle school since they won't be in this building. And did I miss anything else? Okay, thank you.
All right, Mitzi. Administrators' reports. You have three reports in your board packet. Jeff?
There's nothing. I'm not the administrator there. Place hold.
We are kind of in the meeting. We got Michelle, once again, thank you, who we've hired to be our district administrator. She does not start until July 1st, but just so people know, she's really been on board helping, doing everything coming out and so we can say welcome, Michelle. We'll be getting district administrator reports from her soon. Consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda? A second. Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda's approved. Action items. A, consider approving early graduation students for 2021 school year as presented. We have a list in our packet of who those students are and their reasons. We have a motion to approve them.
Motion to approve the early graduation students for next year.
I did have a question. So there was one individual student that noted that they would like to actually make the credit for the GPA. So if we've motion to approve, do they get opted?
I think they have to fulfill those requirements in order to do it. Carrie, is that right?
I, I didn't hear you.
Okay, so there's one student that...
Below the GPA requirement?
Below the GPA requirement as well as the credit requirement that would be necessary for...
Yeah, so then they would not be eligible, but they have to be applied in the policy window. So they cannot be eligible if they don't meet the credit and GPA requirement. And they also don't have to go just because they apply. That's another thing that commonly gets asked. They have to apply in the window, but if they decide they want to stay, that's fine.
So if we approve it tonight, it's still...
They still have to meet the requirement at the top. Okay.
Okay, Jeff just brought to my attention that there was one item on the, well, you know what, we've got a motion in a second. I'm looking forward, let's finish this on. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There is the C number three, the occupational therapist, that's the one here. We need a motion to rescind that from the consent agenda. Add there, was it, you want to explain that? Change your mind?
She originally was going to resign. She was at 80%. She'd agreed to a 60% contract for next year, so she was pulling her resignation off and will be issuing her contract for 60% if you approve contracts.
Okay, so we don't need to approve the new contract, we're just rescinding this one?
Rescinding your resignation.
Need motion for that.
Need motion to rescind the resignation.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Action item B, consider approval of spring 2020 sport fee refunds. Leave that key on the finance as well?
We got the motion to approve the spring 2020 sports.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Are they all being flat refunded or do the families have the option of a finance or credit?
There's no option.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. C, consider approval of school nursing contract for fourth healthcare for the 2020-2021 school year.
I would move that we approve this school nursing contract for no fourth healthcare.
I would ask for a suggestion in some sort of amendment that was a pretty large to be, I thought we could negotiate some hours.
If I could give you the numbers, the existing contract for this current year was forty-nine thousand eight, eighty-two. The proposal for this next year was over fifty thousand. What we did was agree to a reduction in hours from nine-hundred-and-sixty hours to six-hundred-and-forty hours, which is basically twelve hour a month. The nurse primarily takes care of record keeping, making sure our store is right, some basic things. Actually, our secretaries do the dispersal of ninety-five percent of the medications. So reducing this contract doesn't change anything. And we reduced it by hours, so we reduced it to thirty-four thousand two hundred and forty dollars. So we got savings of about sixteen thousand dollars.
Okay, but that's not reflected in what we got to see, correct? That's why I understand what Christiana, Christiana's saying is that we see as forty, so that's not, agreed to what we see is not going to agree to the fifty-one thousand we see on that paper.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Our board packet didn't include any revisions. It just showed the fifty-two...
Thousand dollars, yeah. There's no revisions. It doesn't state that there's a reduction and we're going to pay thirty-four, two forty. It says we're paying fifty-one something.
I've got it here and I've got it printed.
Okay, we didn't get that in our board packet.
Yeah, it wasn't.
So when I said I wasn't going to approve, it's because I wasn't going to approve that what we saw originally.
Okay.
I've made a motion. We don't have a second.
We don't have a second. Mitzi could make the motion to approve it.
So are we making a motion to add this?
Yeah.
Someone specific among them?
Yes.
Thirty-four thousand two hundred and forty dollars.
And that's the two motions to approve. And I'll second it.
Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consider approval of payment of Lakeland Coach Lines contract for remainder of 2019-2020.
I make a motion to consider approval of the payment of Lakeland Coach Lines contract for the remainder of 2019-2020.
Second then.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. B, consider approval of wraparound care proposal. This also, it was discussed at finance a bit.
I would move that we approve the wraparound daycare proposal as presented with flexibility of location.
There a second? Need a motion in a second. Is there a discussion?
I would like to say that I do agree that we need to flesh it out and to try to help. It should be a vote of location from my end of the motion.
Basically, it was stated on the sheet that Jeff provided us that there is, once this is approved, is approved, there will be more looking into it, figuring out the locations, figuring out, we're sure the cost, but it's a great thing, I think, for our families. So it's a win-win. This is just proving the first step that we want to do it and now we've got to get all the details. Any further?
Carrie, you have a report.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. F, consider approval of four-day school week proposal. We have a presentation. We need a motion for the presentation?
Yes.
You have to make a motion and a second in order to discuss it.
Okay.
Then you can amend your motion afterwards if you need to.
We have a motion to consider approval of the four-day weekend.
I have a motion to deny the approval of the four-day weekend.
Okay, is there a second? Yeah, I think...
Call for another second.
Is there a second to that? To the denial? Not having a second, that motion fails.
Fail the motion to consider.
Is there a second to that?
I have a second there.
Any further discussion? I believe we have a presentation.
I'm a teacher here at Pomar Eagle High School and I was approached to get a ad hoc committee together to look into the four-day of school week plan. My other presenter here is Matt Sockrider. He's a parent. This committee was made up of teachers and parents, eight of us total.
All right, and Sue, can everyone hear you okay?
No.
How about now? Here we go, all right. Yeah, my name is Matt Sockrider. I've been in the district for about eight years, so I've got a second and third degree since we knows where I'm coming from. In the same vote as some parents who've expressed the hesitation, but the more that I've learned about it and more knowledge that I have and more research, the more it is an exciting opportunity that I think our district definitely needs to take into consideration. So some reasons why to consider...
Hopefully will answer most of the questions that were thrown out in public comments as well.
Absolutely. So a few reasons to consider the potential of moving to a four-day school week. It's bold and innovative, reinventive. Our district obviously needs to reinvent itself. Anybody who's been on the work for the past year, two, three, four years, we know we need to make some changes. It saves money. Obviously, we need to save some money. That's very important. Some specific reductions in costs that we would expect to experience would be a reduction in bus fuel, bus fuel costs, a reduction in the 4K bussing costs, twenty percent reduction in food service, reduce utilities, the day that the school is not being used, reduced cost of hourly wage personnel, reduction in, I guess justification of reduction in staff salaries, which would get huge savings to the district, and also the reduction of costs for substitute teachers as moving to a four-day school week is demonstrated to reduce the, reduce absences for teachers.
Some of the additional benefits, gives us more time for our family activities and extracurriculars, creates three-day weekends. The plan we're proposing actually has the Monday off instead of the Friday, but that's not set in stone. It creates a three-day weekend either way. Gives you an opportunity to make appointments and such and not have to pull your kids out of school for that. Time with your extended family, so maybe a trip to grandma and grandpa's can be a little bit longer than just a couple of days or a day and a half. Monday teacher preparation time instead of weekend preparation is big positive for drawing in new teachers. Extra day allows for personal, social, emotional wellness. Studies have been done about the emotional wellness for the students and how they get that extra day of recovery. Increase student engagement because they're only concentrating their learning on those four days, it does increase their engagement. Strategy, strategies for increasing teacher recruitment and retention, it's pretty positive amongst the staff members in the districts that are doing four-day schools and so it shows that they get to either, it's better for bringing in new teachers, which is something that is always a struggle for us with our low P. And it also helps retain the teachers that are here. They like it because of the extra time. Attract new and returning students to our districts. We think that this would make us innovative enough that maybe we would bring in some extra open enrollment students. That's something that we need to do with this district. We need to make ourselves unique. We're studying internship opportunities on the fifth day. A lot of our high school kids do that now at the beginning of the day or at the end of the day. This would open up a whole days for an eight-hour opportunity, could get a lot more out of that. Increase attendance rates for both students and teachers. Studies show that that happens. Increase collaboration time for staff. That extra day where we're not dealing with kids necessarily would give us more time to work collaboratively. Promote positive student-teacher relations. Expanded opportunities for individual student supports. If kids need extra help, they can come in on that fifth day and get remediation, we can do enrichment. We'll talk more about that in the next couple of slides. And increase concentration of instructional time, again, because you're putting it into four days as opposed to five, we're concentrating it more and those are some of the benefits. What does a calendar look like? That's a big question. A lot of people have issues with that. Is it going to make our day much longer? Is it going to make our school year much longer? Well, when we figure out the minutes that the GPI requires, in this district, we're way over right now on our minutes. So it really doesn't change our day that much. It adds twenty minutes to the high school and middle school day. We are proposing a seven-thirty-five AM start to three-fifteen PM. There's actually no anticipated change in minutes for elementary school right now. Calculations show that we are fine with our minutes with this proposal, so we don't have to add anything to the elementary school day as of right now. We could add a little bit of time if we wanted to at the beginning of the day, an extra ten minutes possibly because of the little bus schedule. So if we wanted to add a little extra time for our lunch, kids, we could, but as right now, we're not in close today. Student's school year would start early. It would start on August 25th and it would end on June 10th. So there's four days at the beginning and four days at the end. So we are extending the school year by four days at the beginning and four days at the end to make up for those extra days. We do have to apply and be granted a waiver to start before September 1st and so that's something that the board would have to make sure that we did or our administrator would have to do. And there is a... Yeah, can you open it? So this is the proposed calendar and the minutes have been calculated. We'll get the legend on there. The purple days are the fifth days that would basically be optional days. I don't want to say off because it's not really a day off. They're optional days. So if you look at our normal calendar, go back up to the top, Michelle, please. We do start earlier, so we start October or August 25th would be the first student day. The teachers are going to be here for in-service before that and there's going to be some new teacher in-service before that. That's what those first couple of days are. And then you can see that most weeks have the Monday off. There are some exceptions to that. When we come back from Thanksgiving break, we have a Thanksgiving break on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, so, and then Saturday, Sunday, so that Monday we would be in school. And when we come back from spring break, we would be in school that Monday. And when we come back from Christmas break, we would be in school that Monday. So those weeks after long breaks would still be five days, but there's really only three of those. Some of the other things about the calendar, you have your normal holidays that are right down there. One of the things that we were concerned about, I guess, is face-to-face days and you can see that the... There's a hundred and sixty-one student days and a hundred and sixty-nine teacher days. And so our teaching staff did take a five percent reduction in pay for, or board chose to give us a five percent reduction in pay. Well, that lines up very nicely with, the teachers would only be working every other for a third of the fifth days, so those duties would be spread amongst the teachers. And so we would have reduced days as well, about five percent less days. Works out pretty nice that that actually came out about the same. I didn't think what else. Is there anything else about the quarters, trimesters? That all kind of stays the same. And then at the end of the school year, instead of being done June 5th like we are this year, we're June 10th, so there's your four days packed on to be on there. And again, that's a four-day week, so that would be a Monday through Thursday week. So that's the calendar.
Okay, so what happens on the fifth day, right? We mentioned that there is still a fifth day, so it's not, not just getting rid of a fifth day of education, kids being with other kids, socializing and everything, all the benefits of elementary school, not getting rid of it. Students may attend, it will still be something there for them to attend. Students may attend, but it will still be something there for them to attend. It would just be an optional day. So, parents can choose to send their kids on the fifth day, or they can choose to not send their kids based on whatever their individual circumstances are. Parents wouldn't be able to use wraparound care at the school when they did not, since bus transportation would not be made available on the fifth, optional day. For transportation, obviously, it's a concern, but a lot of people live in town, and then there are obviously other alternatives, parents working together, some carpentry. Obviously, there's also the benefit for the older kids to take part in work studies, internships, collabs, things like that, that can take up that fifth day as well.
Well, there are things that we could do on the fifth day, opportunities for enrichment, remediation, one-on-one support, and possible intervention so students that are struggling, we could have them there that fifth day and really work concentrated effort on helping them get caught up, rather than trying to do it in the 30 minutes that we have during the school day, during the normal school day, I should say. Lifestyle activities, we talked about them making lunches and serving lunches and cleaning up after lunches, possibly some other things like changing oil and all kinds of stuff like that, so lifestyle activities. Social, emotional support, academic and career planning. We used to do that in our homerooms, but we haven't done a whole lot of that, so that's something else that we maybe could explore into at a larger extent. Steam activities, field trips. Field trips, instead of taking them out of a normal school day, we could do those on those days. Technology, maybe our robotics and coding or those types of things. Community connections, we talked about we could maybe do some more things with Generac or Santa Process or some of the different industries right in our community. Community service hours, grand-friendly activities, they could go to the nursing homes and work with their grandparents or the elderly in our communities. And possibly some, I think that's supposed to be free play activities. So, we could do some recess things. I know that they cut recess in some of the elementary grades, so we could do some of that as well. This map just kind of gives you an idea of how we could maybe make history. Talking about bold and innovative ideas. Four-day week, schools everywhere west of the Mississippi, pretty popular. You can see that there are a few on the east side of the Mississippi, but not many. We would be the first school in Wisconsin to do that for next year. Next graphic shows some elementary attendance. This was from a school in Wyoming that went to a four-day week, and the third year is the year that they went to the four-day week schedule, and you can see that their attendance had a major change. The next year, it went up again a little bit, but then the following year, it dropped again dramatically, as opposed to what it was before. And there's still going to be some, the black bar, I believe, was medical appointments itself. There's still going to be some attendances for that sort of thing, but if we could try and give those on the first day, those would be even less as well on Mondays or the Fridays, whatever day we end up having not having normal classes. And definite change in attendance. Yeah, you can go to the next one. Next one is secondary attendance also, and you can see the same thing there. And not sure exactly what happened in 2018, 19, if there was a bad year of flu that year, but it did go back up, but then it dropped again dramatically, and you can see how it's really dropped from what it originally was.
Okay, so one of the key things that we're considering when it comes to the potential of a four-day week, right, is how happy people are with it. And studies have shown, this is information from Colorado, one of the states that adopted this pretty early on, and specifically, everybody, all key stakeholders, after the programs have been in place for just a few short years, 80 to 90% dissatisfaction among community members. That's not just talking about the parents, students, and teachers, so the community as a whole, in addition to students, parents, and teachers. Every place that's done it, done it for a certain period of time, the vast majority of people are happy with the results and want to continue to do so.
We know that there are issues and concerns regarding this. We know it's kind of scary. A lot of the fear that I had looking at it from the beginning was based on, I didn't know how it would work, I guess. So, I believe the more knowledgeable we become about how the four-day week works, better off it is, or better it sounds. Some of the possible issues, concerns that have come up are a longer day for staff, so possible daycare coverage issues for them, daycare for staff during, and their children on the fifth day. We haven't fully analyzed the expected savings. Is this going to save us that much money? We're not sure. We have not done a cost analysis on this yet. Further input needed from staff and parents. We do have some concerns. Are we forcing the issue without full and proper consideration? There is a potential to lose some students to open enrollment. That was expressed in one of the public comments. Do we need a waiver to run a four-day week from DPI? As far as we know, we, the research says you just have to meet the minute rule, so we're good on that. But this, again, is new and innovative, so is that something we need to consider? Additional detail needed, what exactly will it look like? So, those, planning those fifth days is going to take a lot of work on the staff's part, and so what's that actually going to look like? Do we need more time in organization for proper implementation? Perhaps we do. Preference for Monday to Thursday or Friday as a fifth day. There seem to be quite a few people that were talking about they prefer it a Friday off as opposed to Monday off, is that something we have to ask? And transition for special ed and PLO students, I believe one of the public comments talked about that. We realize that those are possible issues or concerns.
So, weigh in the options, right? Just kind of did a quick positives and negatives, right? Cost benefits. So, option A, this is what we have kind of determined, or immediately, what are our options when it comes to a four-day week? The first option would be just to maintain the status quo, right? Just keep doing what we're doing. Change is scary. Change can be hard. It would require a lot to put this in place immediately, so just be doing what we're doing. The problem with that is that change is needed, and the status quo is not sustainable here long-term financially. So, if you don't take any action whatsoever, there's definitely a missed opportunity here. Not only do we get the first Wisconsin, but this is something that innovative school districts are doing, and again, all of the research shows the benefits far out ahead of us. Another negative of just maintaining the status quo, keeping exactly as we're doing, would be an issue with teacher retention. This is a big concern of mine with two million kids in the district. How do we motivate teachers to stay in one of the lowest-paying school districts without having something to offset that? An extra day a week, or I guess two per month, or whatever it comes out to, might be just what we need to retain the talented, hard-working teachers that we have and to attract more and better teachers to work with. Second option would be an immediate move to a four-day week for this coming school year. Obviously, we could leverage the timing. The earlier bird gets the worm, the quicker you act, and hopefully, you can achieve benefits from it. We would realize some immediate cost savings. And then, a positive or a negative, we learn as we go, right? We innovate as we move forward. That could be a positive or a negative, depending where you move forward immediately. But it's an exciting opportunity because we can create something as we move forward. Another negative for moving forward immediately is just all the unknowns. Everybody is kind of scared of the opportunity. I was definitely at first as well, because there's so much unknown. We don't know exactly what it would look like. There's a lot of diligence, a lot of planning that needs to go, who basically have to almost immediately move from planning into implementation, which is a concern that our community has. And then, again, we obviously know that there is a lack of buy-in from all of the stakeholders. We need the parents to be on board, we need the community to be on board, we need the staff to be on board. That's, that would be a big negative for moving forward immediately. So, let's move to the next one, Shelby. The recommendation that our committee has at this time, based on our initial analysis, is that if it is financially feasible to do so, then adopt and enact a plan to report a week for the next school, for 2021, 2022 school year. That would mitigate all of the negatives. The only thing we'd be missing out on would be the immediate benefits and the immediate cost savings. It would be sufficient time to be thorough with due diligence, to go through all the planning process, to coordinate everything, to get everything planned with that fifth day, to just get everything in place. It would allow further time to get additional input from key stakeholders, to make sure that everybody is on board. It would also give teachers, along with the parents and the students, something exciting to look forward to, and that they could take an active role in creating for the following year. And it would be bold and innovative, but also properly planned and implemented change. We need change, but our determination is that we need to have a slightly more cautious and measured change. And then, another benefit here would be the possibility to negotiate, or negotiate a new bus contract that's coming up before too long after the year, where we might be able to realize a lot of greater cost savings from busing that we aren't able to if we move forward immediately, potentially for the following year, based on timing and contract agreements.
Yeah, originally, we thought that the busing contract would be a straight 20% cut in busing costs. We later learned that that was not true based on our current contract, but we believe the busing contract is due for renewal after this year, so that's something that could be negotiated. The committee is made up of myself, Amy Newt, Tammy Anderson, Shelby Nichols, Becky Dev, Heidi Hyde, Joel Tormasi, and Matt. And then, we do have some additional resources. We'll be sharing this with you, board members, so you can have a copy of this to look at. And there are some additional resources that we use to come up with our information. Any questions from board members?
So, the last two sides, so should you recommend C or should you advocate?
Our recommendation is the third, the final option, which tells you if it is financially feasible and if it is something that we're able to, our recommendation would be to move forward with a plan to adopt a four-day week for the follow-up.
And this is not knowing what the financial future is for next year. When we first started talking about the four-day week, it was a do-or-die situation. Obviously, we're in a do-or-die situation. We have looked at it, and we think there's enough benefits that it would be worth going forward, but we also feel that we would like to get more input from the community, and that we would prefer option C, which is to wait and look at doing it for, start planning for next year. That's the recommendation of the committee.
Let's go down to that plan. That'd be plan.
Okay. Are your committee members all still on board with retaining the ad hoc committee and working with our business manager, getting more finances and...
I can't speak for everyone, but I believe that everyone would definitely be on board for that.
I believe everybody would be too, and if not, we could recruit some other people, some other parents and teachers to work with us as well.
I thought we'd be open to other people who maybe want to jump on board, they'll be able to...
Or community members, they don't necessarily have to be parents.
Yeah, we, yeah, we did, because it's all from town hall meeting. Any other specific issues there? Or...
We were thinking along the lines of starting with a survey of at least our parents, that I think would be our first step in getting engaging where they are. We've got, you know, there were some opportunities for public comment, there were some opportunities for emails on the four-day week link that I did not have access to, but I did, I think you only got about a dozen, maybe? So, I think our first step would be to survey the community, survey the parents, and get their feelings on, maybe do a presentation about, because I think part of it is, people don't understand how it works. They just think, oh, their kid's going to be home that fifth day. That's not how it works. It doesn't have to work that way. It can work that way, but it doesn't have to work that way. So, I think we would do a presentation and then a survey after that.
Education, education first about what it is, what would be involved, and then getting feedback, getting some roundtables, getting surveyed, and getting feedback so that we can plan.
Did, did any, did you guys think we could, how many did you...
A lot of them were just misunderstandings about what that fifth day would be about. A lot of people just said, what am I going to do with my kid when they're home that fifth day? But there were some legitimate concerns that we also talked about in our presentation. Some of the things that we brought up as concerns came from those emails. There are some concerns about transportation, and that's something we, obviously, we're paying the bus company, they're not giving us 20% reduced costs on their drivers, maybe we could run a shuttle or something like that. We believe the wraparound daycare helps a lot too with the transportation issues as well, because if you're driving, have your kid for wraparound daycare, then they already are there, and they can just stay at that site for their fifth-day activities. So, that's a possibility as well. But we did, I did get to look at the emails, and we discussed some of the things, but I did not see them all.
Questions that I have posed to me, um, to parents and committee members, is on that fifth day, are those going to be extra expenses to the parents, like the activities that they engage in? Is that something we're anticipating that would be an extra cost to the parents, or are those activities a mixture of that, so it's like a field trip or...
It could be, it could be an extra cost if it's a field trip, if normally that would be a cost that a family would be, but we also would try to look at doing some things with the community, give donations. There's that food group, what's the name of it?
Healthy Community Network.
Community...
Healthy Community.
Healthy Community Network. They reached out to us, but it was after we met, so they, I think, would be willing to work with us to do something to provide lunches. So, there's a possibility that there would be some extra cost, but not every day and every activity. We would look at bringing in, you know, companies, and maybe they would, you know, pay for those supplies for those activities.
Any other questions from the board members?
No.
It means a lot of work. Yeah, thank you, really. I'm looking at you guys, thank you for presenting, and go on back. So, if you would be, your committee would be willing to report, I think we have to figure out a four-day email going to your committee rather than kind of post around here, and just if we have questions going further, or if you come up with further information you want to give to board and committee members, any ground cables are a real good idea, and just really soliciting further information and, yeah. Is that right?
Thank you.
Well, so thank you to all of us, and I know there's other committee members that are out here, and thank you for your work. Okay, we're not going to take action on that, or just...
We have a motion in a session of the table. Do we have the actual motion?
So, motion was to consider approval of a four-day school week.
Nine.
Right, we have a motion in a second, so let's vote on that.
We keep going with their girl, girl. We're not nine, it's eight.
No, we, or though we could amend it to their option C, which is to do it another year, but we can deny it and then readdress it at a different time.
For person nine.
There was a motion in a second to approve the four-day week for this year. All those in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so, we are not moving to go forward through this year. Do we need a motion to encourage the ad hoc committee to stay alive for the next year? Do we need a motion to encourage the ed hoc committee to stay lively and... I guess.
I would make a motion to continue pursuing and doing diligence and investigate. The community involved, make sure that we address the questions. So, I would definitely make a motion to...
Continue to work in the ed hoc committee.
Continue to work in the ed hoc committee and make sure to open up to any old community members that want to be part of that.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead, not me. G, consider approval of senior tax exemption program to staff program. All those with adjusted finance.
I would hope that we approve the staff program. As described.
Oh, second. There's a motion and a second. Any questions or further discussion?
Just as an explanation, it's a great idea. I really love this job. Thank you for bringing it to us. What it will allow is senior volunteers to come into our school at the rate of $5 an hour for up to 100 hours. And that amount of money earned would then flow directly to the municipality to pay part of their property taxes. It encourages seniors to become involved within our schools, builds community relationships, as well as multi-generational relationships between our children and other community members. And it benefits our senior citizens up to $500 for them personally. Jeff indicated that in the district where he was familiar with, they had people who were donating more time than what they were getting back in tax benefit, because those of us who work with kids know you get a lot of other non-monetary benefits. And so, it's a great program. And once again, thank you for bringing it to us, so I really endorse it.
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. H, consider approval of health insurance bid for the 2020-2021 school year.
I'll make a motion to approve the health insurance bid for the 2021.
There a second? Motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I, consider approval of teacher contact contracts for the 2020-2021 school year.
I'll make a motion to approve the teacher contracts for the 2021.
There a second? Any questions or discussion?
Have we fully said, I guess I'm confused in the process of how to determine how many teachers are required for the, like, in elementary school? That's still the process, right? You guys have to come together and...
That's why the list of teachers and contracts that I shared with the finance committee, there were a number of people with question marks, whether they will return or not. So, the only contracts we would issue right away are those that we definitely know we have a need for.
Okay.
And the numbers I listed were at a 5% reduction in their salary from the previous year.
Any further questions or discussion?
Do you have an idea of plan with that 5% reduction? What type of overall cost savings that is going to translate to?
The total was about $420,000. About $146,000 was reduction in staff. So, the reduction of the returning teachers makes up the rest of it. But the total would be about $420,000.
Any further?
I would just like to, no, I didn't. I'm sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. J, consider approval of elementary school principal contract for 2021.
I'm motioning to table that.
Is there a second?
I have a second half.
Any further discussion?
Are we thinking we will table it until possibly Thursday with a closed session meeting?
Yes. So, we're going to talk about personnel and the contracts in the closed session meeting on Thursday. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Administrators report, we kind of went through that with the administrators report. Unless you come up with something as the interim. Announcements, board comments.
I'd like to make a few. Can you guys hear me?
No.
No.
Use this one, Tara.
Okay. I just wanted to make a couple of comments here. And I am so happy to see so many "Make History" shirts in the crowd. I did want to acknowledge the fact that we have some really great community members that made possible a donation of a free shirt to every single child in our school district. And it was made possible with some of our longstanding donors that donate to any and all things related to the school. But it was also made possible from some brand-new individuals and businesses that have never donated to the district for our children before. And part of that was because they saw what we went through over the last year. They heard our students, they heard our staff, they heard our family members. And it really resonated with a lot of people within our community and outside of our community, just how special this district is and how incredibly awesome our children are. And they wanted to give them back a little something that they can proudly wear wherever they go that says beyond "Shadow of Doubt, They Made History." And all of us did that together. And we're looking at this as a start of a new beginning. So, moving forward, yes, change, change is scary. What we went through last year was really scary. And I think we came out of it together, better for it. And I think moving forward, we can continue embracing the change that we did, and we can continue making history. I do want to acknowledge our top two donors for those shirts was Aim Transportation. Those of you that sat through the dissolution hearings, he was a brand-new business. He is personally building a house in the Palmyra area. And he had pledged his financial commitment to help support this community and its district. And this was his very first donation to the children and our community. And he was one of the largest donors to provide these shirts to our kids. And our second largest donor also was our good friends V at Lakeside, our Lower Spring VP, who has been providing funds through his Safer Kids program. And he's also going to be setting up another program starting in June to donate even more funds to the district. So, because of everything that we've gone through together and because of how amazing our children have stood up and stood out because of all of the work that all of us do together for them, people are taking notice. They're stepping up, people are coming in. And I just want to say thank you to each and everyone that made that possible.
Any other comments or announcements?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. This is towards the committee that was looking at the four-day week. I think you guys did a really, really good job of sorting through the concerns and the opportunities in front of us. Some of the brief information that I had gotten prior to this meeting, as we considered it a different committee, was, you know, really depended on who provided you the information as to kind of how the information was skewed, as to whether it was a success or failure. Most of the emails that I've read over the last few days was, you do this, I pull it like this, without any rationalization or any really good questions. So, I think the fact that you took the course of option C, taking a little more time, is probably the most crude decision you could make. I think that you need to continue to go down this road, it's exciting, it really is. But, the one thing that I did take away from what I read was if you focus on it as a cost savings, this will fail. You need to focus on the four-day week as being a curriculum advantage for the kids in some form or fashion. Focus on the kids, it's always been successful. If you focus on the money, you're going to lose. So, just keep that in mind as you go down the road.
I would like to take a moment to express gratitude to a few others. First of all, to Ms. Carrie Tim and the high school staff. I saw great things first about the senior signs that were put in the lawns of our 2020 graduates. I think absolutely... It was awesome. I also saw lots of positive comments about Lathricly Mouths and how that was handled and how happy some families, they did it really well, that they were happy, that their children were happy to be able to come to the school. And that's what we fought for. And I think that bears mention. I also, I don't really like our consent agenda, because I think we skim over some of the things. And when you look at the gifts and donations to our school, and I will cry, because I told Oakley Richardson today when I saw her in Walmart parking lot that I'm a crybaby. But the Steinhaus family gave us a piano. United Way of Jefferson and North Wildworth Counties gave us some money for COVID-19. The Safer Schools, they gave every child in our school district from 4K through 6th grade a book. They're very own that they could order from Spalastic. It's phenomenal. The Healthy Community Network has helped with our lunch program. We are so blessed in this community to have such generous support, that there's no way this school district can fail, and that's what I think.
Any others?
Just to piggyback off Mitzi talking about the Healthy Community Network, they did an additional fundraiser last week on Giving Tuesday. And thanks to an anonymous matching donor in the community, they were able to raise an additional $4,400 that is now going to be donated to the Palmyra Eagles School District Lunch Program. So, whether that seems to continue offering to the students or to the parents, we're definitely going to donate a little money for our lunch program. So, I want to thank them again for their, I mean, support commitment. And whoever that anonymous donor is, we love each other, so that's awesome.
Thanks to everyone, yeah, this is great stuff. All right, upcoming meetings, there's a PR committee meeting tomorrow at 6:30 in the community room. There's also a building and grounds meeting scheduled for Thursday that's not on this. Is that at 5:30?
5:30.
5:30, okay. And then, we have a special board closed session following that. The regular board meeting for June is Tuesday, June 9th at 7:00 PM. Do I have a move to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Needing adjourned at 8:07.
Thank you all for coming here today.